Good evening. It's 6:30 PM on Monday, June, I mean January, June the 27th, 2022, and I now call the Winton Woods City School Board of Education to order, please silence your cell phones and let's join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Seymour, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Bryant?
Here.
Mrs. Coon, Mr. Smith, Mr. Birdy?
Here.
Dr. Johnson?
Present.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. I want to remind you that all of our work that we do follows the SMART goals, which are specific, measurable, achievable, and relevant, and time-sensitive, and they are established around our student, our district goals, which are student achievement, resource alignment, and community engagement. Seeing that we have just started our meeting, the next item on our agenda was 2.01, which was a recess. We're going to forego that and move on to 3.01. 3.01 is public comments, and I did not receive any-
Dr. Johnson?
Yes, sir.
We do have to recognize one person.
Oh, okay. We need to recognize one person, Mr. Smith said. So, Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
So, Ms. Rolzal will come up to the podium, and, no, you're not being recognized.
She's like, why'd you shut up?
Come up to the podium so that you can give a little description and some information about Ms. Jeannie Rankin.
We received the email early in the fourth quarter from the Department of Teaching and Learning, asking us as administrators to select a teacher that we thought met the criteria of good teaching in the district, or that we believed in-
Great teaching.
Great teaching?
Yes.
Did I say good?
You said good.
Great, good to great, I'm sorry. Example of great teaching. So, it didn't take me long. It was just a matter of coming out of that email and going into the next email because I knew exactly who I would refer. The person I selected was Ms. Jeannie Rankin. I first worked with Jeannie when I joined the district a few years ago. She supported me in my work as the facilitator for all of the summer school programming. She was a person that really helped me with the computer part of the programming, and just really all-around accessible, friendly, and a very personable, professional. That's the main thing. She's very professional, and she works extremely well with kids, and that's very hard to find. Some people are good with kids, not with adults. Good with adults, not with the kids. She has found that happy median, and she's very, very strategic in the way that she works with the young people, very strategic the way she works with her colleagues, just overall impressive person. And then you put that all together, and she's an extremely pleasant person to deal with, and I enjoy having her as part of my staff. My team enjoys having her, the students enjoy working with her. So, it was very easy for me to recommend Ms. Jeannie Rankin.
Very good. All right. I have a certificate for her.
Ms. Rankin, could you go ahead, please?
The Winton Woods City School District Board of Education presents this certificate to Jeannie Rankin in special recognition for receiving the 2023 State Board of Education, District Four Teacher of the Year Award.
Pretty good.
I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank all the people that made this possible, thank my students, their parents, our community, my colleagues, my administrators, and the board for honoring me with this prestigious award, and it has truly been an honor for me to serve this community for 42-plus years and look forward to many more.
Wow. Very good. Thank you.
On the, on the back of the document, you don't have to read it right now, but there's something on the back, and I wrote the number down. You cannot consider retiring until 2028, sometime like that, all right? Or 30. It says 28 or 30. It has two dots there.
Yeah, two different days.
So, that's why we brought, so who did you bring with you tonight?
I brought, with me, my husband, Paul Rankin, and great friends, Jay and-
Come up and get a picture with that group.
You gotta get a picture together. Absolutely.
Absolutely. Yeah. So, all, all the people that you brought would come up for a picture?
Family and friends, come on, we want a picture.
I'm using this as part of the witness protection program so that they remember that you can't retire.
Should I go with my students?
Absolutely. Yes, come on.
She's like, no, no.
Oh, my goodness, she was a student. That's so awesome.
Teaching and learning. Get into the picture, please, because that's part of what we do. Mrs. Bray?
Yeah, just move that, that podium up.
No, we don't.
Ah, yay. Nice picture.
Mr. Denny, get in there. You've been part of something.
Hey, the more the merrier. Can you see without the podium? Is the podium in your way, Drew?
Okay. Okay. Ms. Wilson, we need you up there, too, because you sent the information to the Ohio Department of Education.
Did Mr. Smith make you a photo?
Yeah. I'm calling other people out, right?
Yeah, that's what happens.
Wow. This photo with you in it, that makes it official.
Do you have the podium on the way through? Um, it's not blocking anyone.
Drew is a professional, she can get pictures around anything.
My oldest son had Ms. Rankin as a teacher, and she did a great job with him. So, thank you for everything that you did, and I know he appreciated you greatly and how much you helped him. So, thank, thank you.
Congratulations, Ms. Rankin. Forty-two years in the district. We really appreciate your dedication and service to our district and to our students. We really do. Thank you so much, and well-deserved, well-deserved award, so, very good. All right. So, we did skip a little bit over public comments, but I didn't have any public comments, so we're going to move on past that to 4.01, which is the Winton Woods Teachers Association, and we have a person here from the Winton Woods Teachers Association to speak. Want to just say hello? You don't want, all right, all right, they're, they're good. Hello, welcome, and thank you for coming out today, okay? The next item on the agenda is 4.02, which is the O.C. Association, Ohio Association for Public School Employees, and yes, you can have the floor. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam President, Board President, Superintendent Smith.
That's right.
It's okay. We want, we want to make sure you're heard on camera. We can hear you, but they won't be able to hear you in TV land.
Good evening, Madam Board President, Superintendent Smith, Board members, community members. OC would just like to say have a happy and safe summer. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is 5.01, which is the approval of minutes as presented. Board, unless you see anything that we need to change, a motion is in order.
I motion to approve the minutes from the May 23rd, 2022, Winton Woods Board of Education.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 6.01, which is the Treasurer's Report for the financial statements for May 2022. Mr. Seymour, you have the floor.
Yes, you have the report in front of you. Just a summary of that report is the year-to-date revenues in the general fund through the month of May at $48.3 million. The month-to-date revenues were approximately $1.4 million, which is mostly made up of our state funding source. Our general fund expenditures for the year-to-date were at $46.7 million, and currently we're running approximately 5.8% under budget, or approximately $3 million under our anticipated budget. I would mention all, however, though, we're running fairly close to our five-year forecast as we presented when we went for the bonds, the five-year forecast that we presented to the Moody's Rating System. The district also had an unencumbered balance of approximately $26.3 million in all funds, and on page four is a list of each fund and its fund balance. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them, but that's a summary of the financials for the month. Most of you are getting familiar with them. They're pretty much the same format each month. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Seymour. With no objections being hurt, we'll let the financial statements for May 2022 be submitted for audit. The next item on the agenda is 7.01, which is the Treasurer's Recommendation for Investments for May 2022. Mr. Seymour, back to you.
Yes, for the month of May, the district earned $23,703 in interest. Of that, $19,835 for the general fund, and our building fund yielded $3,868 for the month of May. We still have some funds under investment that are coming in, and we still get, we have them in money market right now, liquid cash.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Board, a motion is in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the investment report as presented.
I second the motion.
Are there any questions for discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 7.02, which is the Final Appropriations Resolution for Fiscal Year 2022. Mr. Seymour, back to you.
Yes, I presented you with the final appropriations for the current fiscal year. We do this each year. In the appropriations, I did not adjust or change any taxing funds, which is your general fund, your permanent improvement, but I did adjust bond retirement, as you may have noticed. It's up significantly for both revenues and expenditures because we did the refunding, refinancing. So, those funds flew in, flowed through the account so that we could pay off the bonds that we redeemed, and then we got funds for the bonds that we sold back out. It was more or less a net in and out, but the appropriations have to reflect that refunding. And at the time of the original appropriations, refunding last spring, last fall was not on our radar until it was presented to us as a mechanism to save dollars for the taxpayers, and after we knew the total amount that could be refunded and refinanced, then I adjusted appropriation to reflect that. The state and federal funds, however, are adjusted. As you know, they have a different fiscal year than we do, and what we do at the end of each year is look at what have we received and spent, and what have we, it's called our project cash request, what have we submitted for the month of June to request for what we have spent in June, and then we amend the appropriations to reflect it. Physical, state and federal funds have a different fiscal year. They run from September 1st through August 31st, and we run June, July 1st through June 30th. So, basically, at the end of each, our fiscal year, I will come with an adjustment to reflect what we actually flowed through those federal or state grants. And as you recall, we also added the bus purchase, which we didn't know at the time, and I believe we modified the permanent improvement and '18 during the year, and they remained the same as you modified them in February. I don't know if you have any other questions, but these are just the final appropriations for our current fiscal year.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Board, a motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the final appropriations resolution for fiscal year 2022 as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion for Mr. Seymour?
I do have a question.
Yes.
Sure.
You had mentioned under here, I see the school bus program, and then I also see the elementary and secondary school emergency relief, one and two. Just for the sake of the public, can you explain those line items?
You're talking about ESER, Emergency Secondary School? Those are funds that we received from the federal government in response to COVID, and those funds are restricted in how they can be used and spent. ESER, the first round is completed, round two, we're in the middle of, and round three, we're in year one of three. So, those grants are either, our most, the one grant is for a three-year period, which is the ARP, American Recovery. Does that help answer it?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification and for that question, Mrs. Bryant. Are there any other questions for Mr. Seymour? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 7.03, which is the Temporary Appropriation Resolution for Fiscal Year 2023. Mr. Seymour, you have the floor.
Yes, each year I requested the board to adopt a temporary appropriation at the end of June so that we can start the next fiscal year. I need appropriation in place, the board authorizing me to make expenditures, until I bring those appropriations to you, and they'll be brought to you in August or September, the appropriations for the current year, and then in November would be the revised five-year forecast. So, these are just temporary appropriations to give me authority to make payroll and pay bills as they come due.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Board, a motion would be in order.
I make a motion to approve the resolution determining to proceed with submission of an additional tax levy as presented.
You want to do the temporary appropriations?
Oh, sorry. It's temporary.
That's okay.
It's temporary.
Yes.
I make a motion for the temporary appropriations for fiscal year 2023. My apologies.
That's okay. I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for Mr. Seymour on this one? I just want to reiterate one thing that he did say, this is just temporary for the new fiscal year, and we will see this again, Board, in August. Okay?
August or September?
Yeah. Round the first of the year.
I want to kind of wait till I have solidified state funding, but I have a deadline of September, of September to get that to you.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, by law.
Right.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. No further questions for Mr. Seymour regarding this line item? Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Sure. Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously as well. The next item on the agenda is 7.04, which is the Resolution Determining to Proceed with Submission of an Additional Tax Levy. Mr. Seymour, you have the floor.
Yes, this is a proposed recommendation for the board to, to determine to proceed with an additional tax levy. It's a five-year, again, a five-year, $3 million. We call it emergency levy. That's just the term that the state uses. It's, we are using it as a five-year measure, and we will then, at that time, know how far the new funding formula has funded the district, and at that time, the board in place at that time can decide if they would want to ask the voters to renew that levy. So, this is a temporary, five-year, $3 million, and it's exactly as we had proposed at the last election. I would be remiss if I didn't recommend to the board, and I think Mr. Smith supports, we need to have additional funding for our district. It's been a long time since we have had any additional funding for our general operations. It's been since 2009 that we have increased our collections in general fund taxes for general operations of the district, since 2009 that we've had an increase, and that's a long time. And as you know, right now, we are in an inflationary situation where we haven't been for a while. We don't know what will happen with gas, our utilities, and our, just our needs to operate the district. I don't know if you have any questions of me, but-
Well, let's get the motion on the floor, and then we'll ask some questions or clarifications. Board, a motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution determining to proceed with submission of an additional tax levy as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion for Mr. Seymour?
Ms., Dr. Johnson, yeah. In your recommendation, Mr. Seymour, it says the estimated cost to the resident's home is attached, but they don't see it. Can you just?
Oh, sure. I have it in here. The estimate, this is just Randy Seymour's estimate. It always has to be certified by the county auditor, but it's been accurate the last few times. The cost for a $100,000 home would be $189. That's on a $3 million collection, and the millage, equated to millage would be approximately 5.4 mils.
How much per month?
I don't know, Steve.
I think according to this that we have is $15.
$15.
$15.75 per month.
Right. And I think that's the part that the community needs to look at. You know, we give the whole number of what it would be over a year. You know, it can overwhelm people, but when you say what it is per day or what it is per month, it's something more agreeable. And Mr. Seymour did mention that inflation is staring us in the face, but we also haven't had new funds since 2009.
Exactly.
I do see that it is on here. Sorry about that.
Yeah, it is at the bottom, and that's on a $15.75 on a $100,000 house. So, it would go up accordingly to that, so, but, any other questions or statements for Mr. Seymour at this time?
I have one other thing to just consider, Mr. Seymour, that you put on here, that the five-year emergency levy will reduce the cost to the homeowner by approximately $55 per month from our prior levy request.
That was, that was when we were asking for a regular millage levy, and we decided to reassess that and go with the emergency levy.
Correct.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mrs. Bryant. That's relevant to say, so thank you for bringing that up. If there are no other questions or statements to Mr. Seymour, we'll ask him to call that vote.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda, thank you, Mr. Seymour, for your reports. The next item on the agenda is 8.01, is the reports of the superintendent, and Mr. Smith, you have the floor for your school reports.
Yes, Madam President and Board, there are going to be four reports. They'll be quick. The first one is the Spectrum Timeline. We've partnered with Spectrum, and Spectrum is working diligently with 802 families where they will give free internet access for the entire year, and that price tag is usually about $69 a month, but parents don't have to pay it at all. Right now, we have probably 79 people signed up. That concerns me because I think people believe that they're going to get a bill later on. They do not get a bill. They will not receive a bill. The equipment comes to their home. If there needs to be more equipment, Spectrum comes in and takes care of it, so there's no cost to families at all. And when you look at this deal where we're talking about it'll cost the parents $15 a month for a $100,000 property, but we've got a Spectrum deal that almost is $60 a month. Well, you figure it out. I mean, it's really an advantage to every family to do it and do it in a way that, because we've issued Chromebooks, if we can use the technology and we can reinforce it at home, then our teachers are really more apt to create more incredible projects and opportunities for young people so that they can stay on target and do what they need to do. So, we're going to actually have a parent meeting on August 3rd at 4:30, and we'll send out more information. So, just to let parents know, this is a free opportunity. It does not cost you any money, none, but we're limited to 802 slots. We do have some opportunities that if we get more people involved, we'll go back to Spectrum and make some, and solicit their services to get more additional spaces if we can, but we do need to take care of the 802 so that Spectrum doesn't look at it to say, you wanted these spots, and now you can't even fill them. That, that's, that's going to go somewhere else, and so there's, there might be this other district that doesn't use all their spots, and I'm not being selfish, I'm just being very intentional. I want my spots and their spots, too, so that we can take care of our families the way that they need to. Mr. Seymour, you mentioned inflation. Well, you know, I know that some of my young people will lose their internet services over the, over the summer and in the fall because parents are having a hard time trying to afford it. We've taken care of it. We've been working on this deal for two years, and now we've solidified it, and it's ready to go. The second one, as I mentioned, there's a parent meeting August 3rd at 4:30, and we'll send out information of exact location so parents can sign up right there and be on the list. And then I'd like for Dr. Martin and Dr. Ragland to just come up and give a quick update of how summer school is progressing. When it gets to this point, they rush to the podium because they want to speak first.
Good evening, Board, and Mr. Smith. So, to give you an update on high school and middle school summer school, right now, currently, the middle school has a second session going on, so they had session one where they had six out of seven earn their math course, and in session two, they currently have nine students that are working, including the one student who did not earn their course in the first session, so they have retained that student. In ELA, they had 12 students earn their course grade out of 15, and currently, they have nine students who are working, including those three who didn't earn the course during the first session. They currently have 45 students that are enjoying enrichment opportunities such as photography and creative writing and STEM and robotics. With regard to the high school, we have approximately 115 students, some who have already completed all of their credit, whether they were earning half a credit, one credit, and some of our students were earning more than one credit, so they have more than one course to recover. And so, we have students who are diligently working, and in addition to those who've earned credits, they have actually been able to return home because we do not allow them to stay beyond or make them stay. It's not based on seat time, it's based on how fast they can demonstrate that they have mastered the material.
And if you notice, Dr. Ragland didn't say develop the material. It's a mastery, because most of these young people that may have had some setbacks during the coursework, they're going to be taking an additional course, so they need to really have a stronger foundation so they can continue on with, so that summer school doesn't have to be a issue every year.
And at the elementary level, here at South Campus, we had over 200 students enrolled in the summer school program. I'm happy to say that we still kind of have, I think we're at like maybe, if it was 215, we're at that 200 level from grades one through six, so we're excited that all of our students are, are staying with us to the end. This is our last week. We had testing this week, so the students were assessed in the MAP assessment, the NWEA MAP assessment throughout the course of summer school. They were focusing on math and reading, literacy, and I'm happy to say that we, we're hoping to see some gains in those assessments. I do believe the assessments are Thursday, Wednesday, Thursday of this week, so we'll know exactly what knowledge was gained and what material was retained for our students once we get those results, and we'll actually look at those results in comparison to the last MAP assessment that they took to see where the growth is and see how our students are actually achieving within the content areas.
And Dr. Martin, can you tell the group what MAP stands for?
Yeah, MAP is, is an assessment of proficiency for our students, so it measures their-
So it measures their, their aptitude within the course of mathematics and reading.
Yeah. And one thing that I hope the public understands, there are some districts that did not have a summer school because they couldn't afford to figure it out. And we figured it out through our governmental funds, through ESAR. And the other part is our summer school was free. And when you're kind of pushing the envelope, the kids get the meal, they get the transportation, and they also get a quality education. We want to continue that. But we do actually have to have more funds in order to make that work because some districts, as I mentioned before, did not have a summer school. So there'll be consequences for young people coming to school in the fall because they're already deficient. And we don't ever want that to happen for us. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you very much. One thing I wanted to revisit, Mr. Smith, you talked about the Spectrum Timeline and how we're trying to get the free internet out to families, and you're going to have the meeting on August the 3. I don't know what else we need to kind of brainstorm on what else we can do to get the word out besides that one meeting.
No, no, no. We've already had several meetings.
Oh, okay.
We're going to have more meetings, and we're sending a lot of information out on the one call.
Okay.
So we've tried to figure out every, but once the parents really receive it, good news travels fast. Once they get in their homes and they realize, I don't have a bill, guess what?
Now, how soon do you need to place those, what'd you say, 802 slots?
They've already got them ready to go. So basically.
I mean, is there a deadline? If you don't give them away by this time, you'll lose them, or?
Well, I'm going to keep telling them that they're on the way.
They're on the way. Okay. All right. I got it. Okay. Well, good. I mean, that's something that the parents should know. $69 a month, you would not have to pay for your internet, and that's a significant bill.
For 12 months.
Yeah, for 12 months. You get it for 12 months. That's a significant bill that you would save. That's $69, $70, and that could go to groceries or some other things.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah.
All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Smith. That's great information. Thank you, Directors of Teaching and Learning, for your reports as well. It's always good to hear about what's going on in summer school, and I love that we added enrichment along with, you know, credit recovery because most students see summer school as a punishment, you know? So if they can have a little fun in the process of, you know, recovering those credits, it kind of makes it just a little bit, little bit better for them. So thank you all for that and putting that together. The next item on the agenda is 8.02, which is the certification of standards governing types of food and beverages sold in schools. And Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yeah, it's really Mr. Denny's report, but I'm going to kind of hijack it and kind of go into the major paragraph of it because he's going to save his, his energy for the facilities update. And the report that comes from Mr. Denny and certified by Mr. Doctor, it reads, "We're pleased to report that the Child Nutrition Department has continued to meet these guidelines and requirements this school year. Further board policy, all of the à la carte food items sold in the lunchroom meet or exceed the guidelines established by the Alliance for a Healthier Generation, and all beverages meet the Ohio requirements and guidelines." Then the final thing, the school principals have to be the overseers, and their last report, we can report that our schools are also in compliance with applicable requirements. So everything is in order. The food is nutritious, and the kids are enjoying the benefits of it. So we're all in compliance as relates to Ohio Revised Code 3313.814.
Yes, very good. And this is informational, but we do want to thank Mr. Doctor and the Food Service Staff for all that they've done to serve nutritious meals to our students within the district. So we appreciate that and that we are in compliance with what the state regulates.
Yep.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is 8.03, which is capital improvement summary plan. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Mr. Denny, 8.03.
And Mr. Denny, our Executive Director of Business Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, and good evening, Board. Good evening, everyone. Of course, it decided to do a software update in the middle of the other report, so we're going to try to get it back online here. But I'll, I'll do some filler time here, which hopefully will still be nutritious.
You going to sing or dance?
It's got to be singing. Because y'all don't want to see me.
So filler time. Let's see how it looks like.
You said it.
So we're going to talk about capital improvements. This is a look back across the last fiscal year. This makes me appreciate our Technology Director, who usually handles this even more. I already appreciate her, but even more so. Thanks for your patience. Okay, so you should see before you, Board, the agenda item concerning capital improvements. And this is a look back over the last fiscal year. This is fiscal year 21, which is school year 2020, 2021, excuse me, 2021, 2022. So, excuse me, as I correct myself, it's fiscal year 22. But what you're seeing is basically a snapshot of the larger items that would be capital, infrastructure-related that the district has invested in over the last year. This does not, this is an important caveat, this does not in any way, shape, or form include the nearly $100 million in new construction that was completed last year. That's tracked in a completely different way. It's a state partnership. The state paid 49 cents on every dollar out of every dollar spent. So it's a very different process, and it's tracked in Oaks, which is a state system, in addition to the local records that Mr. Seymour and his office maintains. So this is basically looking at the large investments, repairs, corrections, investments that the district has made apart from the new buildings. Some of them are pretty straightforward. For example, when we did the borrow pit, we lost our shot-in discus area at the high school. So to host a track and field meet and for the students to be able to participate fully, those two concrete pads had to be put back along with the accompanying equipment. So you can see a couple items there that are at the North Campus, but by and large, these are not at North or South Campus. These are at other locations within the district. It's broken into large categories. So we spent about 3/4 of a million dollars last year, and then 30% of that was for roofing, which is not unusual. Typically, your big expenses are paving, roofing, and vehicles, namely buses. We were fortunate as a district last year to not have to invest any general fund dollars on buses. We were able to use a state grant that allowed us to purchase buses. In addition, the money that was supplemented was ESAR funds because that's allowable usage for the federal relief funds. But basically, you can see, we spent 50% in equipment. The bulk of that was in our multi-function devices, printers, copiers. It had been, our initial contract was 2015. We did a refresh of only the large volume printers in 2018, and we were trying to stretch until the new buildings were finished so we could do a complete reset and, you know, refresh everything in the district. So we were able to take four-year devices and basically stretch them to six. But that's a big chunk of the cost. And then we spent about 9% in security and safety, which is always an investment item that we will continue to pour dollars into because it's, helps us keep our children, our staff, and our visitors in the buildings safe. So you can basically just see a summary there. That's a top-down overview of the capital improvements from last school year. So happy to entertain any questions you might have.
Mr. Denny, I think the public needs to know, how do you determine which things to repair and which things to kind of keep moving along?
Well, sooner or later, things will force you to do something, is one rule. But basically, what I do is I organize it into an A, B, C importance score and a 1, 2, 3 urgency score. That's not reflected in this report, but when I track different items, it has to be balanced against budget. So something might be really important, but it's not very urgent, and it can wait. Something might be maybe not super important, but it's urgent, and we have to take care of it, or it's going to lead to larger issues, and that might escalate itself. So Mr. Smith and I spend a lot of time looking at the different issues around the district and what requires more immediate attention and what does not. Research actually indicates that organizations should spend about 2% to 3% of their assessed evaluation on capital improvements every year. So that's replacing pipes, valves, doors, door frames, all those roofs, pavement, all those kinds of things, sidewalks. Public schools typically don't have that luxury, so we have to be very strategic about how we invest our dollars. For example, our district assessed valuation is 172 million. Even if you take out the 100 million for new construction, we're still left with 72 million. 3% of that is, I think, about $2 million. We don't invest $2 million. We have to invest very judiciously. This is not operating costs. That's completely separate. Maintenance, work orders, all those kinds of things are totally, that's an operational issue. These are large one-time investments or large one-time corrections. Occasionally, you'll see something a little smaller in there. That's typically because I feel it's important that the district track that item because it's probably going to come up later as a reference point. So this, this basically serves as a look back, but it gives you an idea too of how we prioritize trying to keep everyone as safe as possible because if you don't repair certain things, it will cause issues that none of us want to deal with.
And with the buildings being constructed around the same time, just like these new buildings, when things start to happen in the next 20 years, 30, one of the things that we would have to be very, very cognizant about is what to repair and when. And no matter what his list looks like, when safety issues come into play, that becomes a priority. We, we don't negotiate about it. A roof leaking, that's a safety issue. Or a window ready to fall apart, that's a safety issue. And so those things jump ahead of anything that we do. The conversations that we have are very robust. They're very intentional. We cut, we slash, we come back, we renegotiate again. But technically, Mr. Denny gave you a report and gave you percentages. He should be spending about $3.5 million on this, on these facilities every year, and we're not even close. So when you don't do it, eventually, it will catch up with you. So imagine having a house that's worth $200,000, and you're supposed to put, you know, $20,000 or $10,000 into a project. Well, that project's not going to go away. It's going to kind of manifest itself. Now it costs you $20,000 to do the same thing. Not for any homeowners here, because I know you guys never do that, but for the general public, when you put it off, it catches up with you just like an automobile or anything else. You know, turning the music up louder doesn't make the problem go away. It just means you still need those brakes. So we wanted to just kind of give you that information so you could be aware that we're not being negligent. We're just being very strategic, and we have our priorities in line of how to make sure that the buildings are taken care of. The last part is, which makes it more difficult, I think we did this prediction about 10 years ago that when the new buildings came, the old buildings would become very jealous and start falling apart on their own. And that's exactly what they're doing. They are rushing us to put in new boilers and some of those other things, and we're trying to prolong it and say, no, you're not going to make it. We're going to demolish you before, you know, you get us to the end of the term. So again, we wanted the public to understand that these are very strategic pieces, but they are also very, very needed. So thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Mr. Denny, is it possible for us to get a copy of that that's not in our board docs?
Yeah.
Okay.
Of course.
All right. Thank you.
We can give you a copy of the A, B, and C, and the 1, 2, and 3.
I just want that report. Deborah, you and I are, Ms. Bryant, we're on the same page.
I'm just telling you, hey, I have to look at it, so somebody else should share our pain. Okay.
Yeah. I trust you all will make the 1, 2s, and 3s the right.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much, Mr. Denny. The next item on our agenda is 8.05, which is first reads of revised board policies. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President and Board. These are all revisions, and I, I don't just give the number, but I read it so that the public can understand exactly what we're having conversations about. So the first revision is Policy 5772, Students and Weapons. There is also a revision for Policy 6110, Finances. Policy 6011, 6114, Finances, Cost Principal Spending, Federal Funds. Policy 6325, Procurement. Policy 6423, Use of Credit Cards. Policy 7217, Property. And finally, the last revision is 8500. Board, we will come back next month, and you guys will be voting on these policies and these revisions to see if the revisions are in order and they meet all the state and federal guidelines.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. There are a total of seven policies here, Board, that we will need to be prepared to vote on at our next regular board meeting. At this point, it's informational, but we will be voting on them at the next board meeting. Okay, at this time, we're at the point where we need to enter into an executive session. So Board, I will entertain a motion at this time to move into executive session.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session to discuss the employment of a public employee.
I'll second the motion.
It's been motioned and seconded. Mr. Seymour?
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. We will move into executive session. We will return after that, and we will pick up at Agenda Item 9.01 with the superintendent's recommendations at that time. Thank you. Good evening. We're back in session. Mr. Seymour, please call the roll.
Ms. Bryant?
Present.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I'm here.
Mr. Birdy?
Present.
Dr. Johnson?
Present. Thank you, Mr. Seymour and Board. Our next item on the agenda is the superintendent's recommendation for personnel schedules. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
The recommendation, Dr. Johnson, is to approve the personal schedules as presented. Schedule A, Resignations. Schedule B, Certified Employment Appointments, excuse me. Schedule D, Support Staff Appointments. Schedule D, there's Schedule D Supplementals, including the Curriculum Writing Committee, the Curriculum Writing Committee's K-6, 7, 12, and finally, Schedule E, Leaves.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour, I mean, Mr. Smith, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Board, a motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the personnel schedules as presented.
I second the motion.
Thank you. It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for Mr. Smith? Seeing none. Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. The vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 9.02, which is the Exempt Employee Salary Schedule. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President and Board. The recommendation is to approve the salary schedule for exempt employees effective July 1, 2022 as presented.
Thank you, Board. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Board, a motion is in order.
I motion to approve the exempt employee salary schedule as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you. It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 9.03, which is the Exempt Employees Step Placement for 2022 and 2023. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President and Board. I do, I do have a question before you, you guys vote on it. Ms. Wilson, is this, is this schedule done based on steps, or is it done alphabetically? Which one are you using? Yes, ma'am. The position.
What are we looking at?
The steps.
You mean where they are in order?
Yes, sir.
Based on where they are at on the schedule?
In order of compensation.
Compensation level. Unless I have something wrong.
That's not accurate. But, you know, I'd like to see some, some order to maybe moving from step nine and going in that order or alphabetical either way. But that's not the issue at this point. So the recommendation is to approve the step placement for exempt employees on salary schedule for exempt employees effective July 1, 2022 as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Board, a motion would be in order to approve these.
I'll make a motion to approve the step placement for exempt employees on salary schedule for exempt employees effective July 1, 2022 as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion? I'll just reiterate what Mr. Smith said with respect to the steps being in order. It's a little easier to read if they are, but that was my only question as well. So if there are no other questions or discussion, yes, go ahead.
Steps in order, you mean like who's on step nine, or?
Yeah, like we have like. So 9, 8, 7, 6, 5, 4, or in alphabetical order.
The way, okay, the way alphabetical, the only way, the reason they're on there. The way, okay, the way alphabetical, the only way, the reason they're on there this way is this is on the schedule, you have this level here and it goes, I did it by levels. And so I'll be glad to put it alphabetical.
You did it according to this schedule here?
Yeah, like on the top schedule, there's only two.
Well, as long as we know what you followed, then we can follow too.
Right.
That's fine.
I'm sorry.
That's fine. I get it, I get what you're saying now.
Like on the exempt salary schedule, you can see the compensation, administrative assistant and technology. That's the highest paid level. And it goes down to food service, campus supervisor. And the names appear as they fall into the schedule. But I can do it anyway.
Well, no, if we know that you're following this, then we can follow that. I mean, I just didn't know what it felt like.
It would be just simple just to, because their salaries are going to be different. It would just be easier just to 9, 8, 7, 6, 5, and just go from there.
Do what? Okay.
Sort by steps.
That's fine.
All right, thank you. If there are no other questions or discussion, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Ms. Bryant.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Birdy.
Aye.
Dr. Johnson.
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 9.04, which is the proposal for overnight extended student trip for Winton Woods High School's Academy of Global Studies, the 9th, 10th, 11th, and 12th grades. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Dr. Johnson and Board. These are traditional trips that have happened over the years through the Academy of Global Studies. The kids learn a lot, excuse me, they get a lot out of the trips. And all the opportunities are actually geared to them being better introduced to PBL. The only reservation that I have is prior to making the approval, any event that any of these communities, Michigan, Chicago, wherever the kids are going, are hit with a surge of the COVID-19, then we reserve the right to restrict the trip. So the recommendation is to approve the proposals for overnight extended student trips, Winton Woods High School Academy of Global Studies, 9th, 10th, 11th, and 12th grades, March through April, 2023.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Board, a motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposals for overnight extended student trips, Winton Woods High School Academy of Global Studies, 9th, 10th, 11th, 12th grades, March through April of 2023, as presented.
Thank you, we need a second.
I'll second that.
Thank you, it's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion? I am glad to hear that you mentioned about the, if there's a surge in, you know, the coronavirus, whatever strand it is, that we would revisit it. I know that when we did trips before, people lost money.
Yeah, we would have to figure out a way to make sure that those fundraisers are holistic so kids can be reimbursed. So people would know if you're going to get a product or item, you get that item. But through no fault of their own, if there is a surge in a particular community, we wouldn't send kids there.
Right. Very good. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Ms. Bryant.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Birdy.
Aye.
Dr. Johnson.
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 9.05, which is the Revised 2023-2024 District Calendar. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President and Board. And for the community, the district calendar is two years in advance. So this approval, the revision is for the 2023-2024 school calendar as presented.
Board, a motion is in order.
I motion to approve the Revised 2023-2024 District Calendar as presented.
I'll second.
Are there any questions for discussion? I have one question, Mr. Smith. Can you just, like, I don't want you to go through the whole calendar. Can you just highlight what are some of the changes that have occurred?
The calendar committee, when we were looking at the calendar, we realized that our students and our staff, we've gone through a lot of stressful moments as relates to COVID. And so we realized that we could actually insert a fall break on October 12 and 13 with a, without a whole lot of, you know, uncomfortableness for students or teachers or staff. And so we've inserted a fall break in here. And if you notice that on the 16th, which would be that Monday, so the fall break is October 12th, October 13th, and then there's a records day on the 16th. And that would be a no-student day as well. So this was able, you know, when you look at the, what happens with the way the structure of the schedule looks, works, there's a long amount of time, a long period of time before teachers get a break. You know, they were waiting, their next break would be close to, you know, Thanksgiving. So we inserted something so that we could actually have some relief time a little better. Calendar committee unanimously supported that. And I believe the OPEC, as well as the Teachers Association, supported it as well.
Very much, very good. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Board, are there any other questions or discussion on the 2023-2024 district calendar? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Ms. Bryant.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Birdy.
Aye.
Dr. Johnson.
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 9.06, which is the second read of the new and revised board policies. Mr. Smith, you do have the floor again.
Yeah, the recommendation is to approve the second read of the new and revised board policies unless the board has some questions, comments, suggestions, or ideas.
Okay, Board, we got to see these last month. This is the time to vote on them. So let's get a motion on the floor.
I'll make a motion to approve the second read, new and revised board policies as presented.
Okay. It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions with regards to any of these policies?
Dr. Johnson, I do have one.
Yes, okay, please.
In all fairness to Board Member Coon, she had a concern about student attire.
School uniforms, I think.
The school uniform policy.
Yes. And one of the things that we've added to the policy, of course, kids can wear their traditional blue, white, or green shirts, but we've added spirit wear. We think that would just be a whole nice, different approach. One of the things that we don't want to confuse our parents, we sell spirit wear in our schools and kids should be allowed to wear it as well. So it actually goes along with what we believe our kids should be able to have on. And I'm not talking about a Spirit shoe t-shirt with a Sharpie pencil that says Warriors. I'm talking about something a little more definitive. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Yes, and the other thing I'd like to just add to that about the spirit wear is that when I came on the board, one thing I noticed is at the football games, we had all different kinds of colors. But we'd go to other schools and there'd be a sea of purple, there'd be a sea of red. And it's like, how else to instill like the culture of branding our school and everybody having on blue and green is if they can purchase these t-shirts or shirts that are sold in our spirit shop. And they would be able to use those to wear to those games subsequently. And also, it kind of just gives them a sense of pride, you know? I'm, you know, on the girls' basketball team. I'm on the rowing team. I'm on the track team. And they have that, you know, that particular shirt on. So I think that, I think it's a move in the right direction. They're still, we're still, we're not getting away from school uniforms. They'll still have their, you know, khaki bottoms. And those that don't have the spirit wear on official spirit wear, like you said, not something that you made at home or that you've, you know, ironed on with your, you know, at home. But official spirit wear, then it actually will allow that spirit of, you know, warrior pride, you know, to flow. And they will have their blue and green to wear, whether it's for football season, for basketball, for track, or wherever, they can wear their blue and green. So I think it's a move in the right direction.
Yeah, you made a good point. There was a concern that we are getting away from school uniforms. And I would be the first person to tell you that that would be a big mistake because our kids struggle with trying to wear latest fashions. I don't want them to concentrate on fashions. I want them to concentrate on being educated. And if wearing a Spirit shirt and khaki pants can get you to come here every day, that would be more, I would be thrilled.
Absolutely.
So that's where we will never push for the no-uniform thing.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. No other discussion on those, there's seven policies. Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Ms. Bryant.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Birdy.
Aye.
Dr. Johnson.
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 9.07, which is the Resolution Authorizing the Sale of Real Property. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President and Board. The recommendation is to approve the Resolution Authorizing the Sale of Real Property at Public Auction as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Board, a motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the Resolution Authorizing the Sale of Real Property at Public Auction as presented.
Thank you. I need someone to second it.
I'll second the motion.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion regarding the sale of real property? Only question I have is this is just for, to get the bids for it. This is not like the final step, right?
We're not, yeah, we're not.
Yeah.
We can actually reject these offers if we choose.
We're putting it out there, we're accepting it.
Yes, ma'am.
Very good. If there are no other questions or discussion, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Ms. Bryant.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Birdy.
Aye.
Dr. Johnson.
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 9.08. I'm sorry, guess go ahead.
Can we go back to Policy 9.06? I'd like to express something to the board, the Revised Policy on College Credit Plus Program, 2271. There's some important information that I think the board needs to know.
Yes, absolutely. Let's back up to 9.06. He's going to make a point about the College Credit Plus, which is the 2271.
Yes, any male student over 18 that involves themselves in College Credit Plus must register with the Armed Services. So I wanted the board to know that that is a mandatory process that needs to happen. It is not for females. It only specifies males for now.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. All right, thank you for bringing that point forward. The next item on the agenda is 9.08, which is the Resolution Adopting Separation Agreement and Full Release of Claims. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President and Board. The resolution is lost.
Give her mine.
Yeah, let me get that one. Thank you for the highlight.
Yours is probably highlighted, mine is just regular.
Yeah, the resolution is to approve, I guess, the adopting and approving a separation agreement and release of all claims of a particular employee.
Okay, Board, a motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the Resolution Adopting Separation Agreement and Full Release of Claims as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Ms. Bryant.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Birdy.
Aye.
Dr. Johnson.
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 9.09, which is the Resolution Approving Rehire of Retire.
Recommendation, Dr. Johnson and Board, is to approve the Resolution Approving Rehire or Retire of Retiree as presented.
Board, a motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the Resolution Approving the Rehire of Retiree as presented.
I second the motion.
Are there any questions for discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Ms. Bryant.
Aye.
Mr. Smith. Mr. Birdy.
Aye.
Dr. Johnson.
Nay. That vote passes three to one. The next item on the agenda is 9.10, which is the Resolution of Participation in EPC School Bus Purchasing Program. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President and Board. The recommendation is to approve the Resolution Participation in the Southwestern Ohio Education Purchasing Council for the Purchase of Buses as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Board, a motion would be in order.
I recommend, excuse me. Excuse me, I'm getting it up. I recommend the participation in the Southwestern Ohio Educational Purchasing Council for the Purchase of Buses as presented.
Thank you.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. And are there any questions for discussion? I would just like to say I'm glad that we're participating in this and we're keeping our bus fleet up to date and in the best running condition. Now, we need to get drivers for those buses. Maybe advertise that they'll be driving in new buses, I don't know. But that's my only comment. Are there any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Ms. Bryant.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Birdy.
Aye.
Dr. Johnson.
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item, thank you, Mr. Smith, for your reports. The next item on the agenda is 10.01, which is the Board of Education Reports and the Legislative Report to the Board. I did send this in an email out to everyone and you can read it at your leisure. There are a few points that I do want to bring out with respect to, well, the first item is about the education. It says schools will no longer retain third-grade students who cannot reach the cut scores on state English tests under the legislation that passed the House Primary and Secondary Education Committee unanimously. And to further that, it says the legislation keeps the requirement that schools offer intervention and remediation to students reading below grade level, but would repeal the retention mandate for this year's third graders and call for one administrator of the third-grade English test instead of two. So that's something that affects our area for teaching and learning. And there was one other, oh, of course, the biggie, the gun legislation that armed persons within the school's safety zone. And that did pass the House, 56 to 35, and the Senate, 23 to 9. We have not had that discussion as a board.
Correct.
But, Mr. Smith, if you would like to add anything to that, I think that we have discussed in the past with us having additional SROs who are qualified people trained to bear arms. And so I don't know if you want to add something to that.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. I would like to see us be, I would like to see the communities to support the levy in a more robust way where we could have more trained people in the building as opposed to a person with so many, just a few hours, being able to carry a handgun and believe that that's going to protect our kids in safety. At a meeting about a month ago, I mentioned about SROs and the quality of work that they do. Even for a simple thing of having a police car on the present deters people from doing certain things in the school and to the children and to the staff. So I know that some of our superintendent colleagues further north have already passed it and they are actually talking about having people armed in the building, teachers, administrators, you know, for the fall coming up. Before we even get to that point, I would like to have a more extensive, robust conversation with our safety person, business manager, our attorney, as well as law enforcement in our local community. There are some consequences to that. I mean, at the end of the day, you're trying to protect life, but you may have to take a life. And I don't know how many people are really, really prepared to do that because it will actually create a whole different level in your school system when people have to draw arms and, you know, fire on whoever the case may be. It seems very cavalier and it has a lot of safety issues involved where people believe that this would be the right thing to go, the right thing to do. But I think there are some other steps before this step takes place. That's just the opinion of the superintendent.
Yes, and I tend to follow after that opinion as well. I was educated to be a teacher. That's what I want to do. I don't want to, if I would have wanted to be a police officer or something different, that's what I would have went to school for. That's according to my opinion.
Dr. Johnson, if you were to ever go and look, and I'll just kind of pick on the two teachers that I have here today, when you see them engaged with their kids, they're all in. They're totally engaged with their kids. They're leaning over. They're supporting. They're engaging. They're working with them. And for someone to be able to grab a firearm would be easy. I don't want our teachers to start restricting their work around kids because not only do they need to be educated, they need to be loved and be attended to. And so that personal communication and that personal responsibility, and again, as I mentioned before, if you were ever to go into any of the classroom, you see that same level of engagement, people are very comfortable with our children. And I don't want to lose that level of comfort.
I totally agree. So there's other discussion, but I do trust that our superintendent and treasurer and our executive director of Business Affairs is going to do their due diligence, bring the information back to us. And it's going to stay on our radar to get additional SROs to, you know, have that presence in our buildings so that the children feel safe and the teachers feel safe and the administrators feel safe.
You know, there's always an opportunity where you can find something to contradict whatever you say. And I believe there was some information circulating on front door, next door, back door, whatever the door was. And basically, it was information saying that SROs create a bigger disturbance. I find that very, very difficult to believe. That might be the case somewhere, but not in our district. Because the SRO actually gets a lot of things solved that we would not know about. And it's a deterrent to having more police issues or having more violent episodes. So the people that are out there looking for the white papers to support this, I think they're reading the wrong information. SROs can be very, very supportive if they're trained the right way.
To deescalate.
Absolutely.
You know, and stuff. Okay, well, thank you very much, Mr. Smith. That's our legislative report. The next item on the agenda is 10.02, which is the Great Oaks Career Technical Center Report. I did receive something in an email, but, Mr. Burdy, you have the floor.
Yeah, just briefly, I did send everybody an email and it does include presentations that were done at the board meeting by the CEO, President, and the Chief Financial Officer, as well as some of the other documents, the legislative updates, and the diversity committee report, as well as, I believe I gave everybody a roster this time. So if you want to see, maybe you know another board member in another district, you can see who the members of the Great Oaks Board are.
I noticed some of those had a Y or not. Does that mean that person's already been appointed or not on that roster?
I believe that what that means is that Great Oaks has appointed them to be on that board. Like, I don't believe I have a Y next to my name because Winton Woods decided that I was going to be the representative to the Great Oaks Board. And that concludes my report.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Burdy. The next item on the agenda is 11.01, which is board motions and recommendations. And as, I am not aware of any board recommendations or motions that need to be carried out at this time. Therefore, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is 12.01, which is comments from the Board of Education Superintendent and Treasurer. Mr. Brandon Smith, do you have any comments at this time?
Nope.
Thank you. Mrs. Deborah Bryant, do you have any comments at this time?
I do. I want to say congratulations again to Ms. Rankin for District 4 Teacher of the Year. Just another shout out to all of the hardworking educators that are making the summer sessions meaningful for our students and the enrichment activities, for all of the meals that are going out to all the people that are driving the vans and pivoting when something happens to transportation. Thank you for doing such a great job. And everyone have a safe and enjoyable summer.
Thank you, Mrs. Bryant. Mr. Burdy?
In the interest of brevity, what she said.
Okay. He must be ready for that.
Those are all the things I was going to say, so you don't need to hear it again.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Mr. Seymour, do you have anything to add?
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Smith?
Yes, ma'am. Finally, I'd like for the parents to really key in on the spectrum opportunities so that they can get the Wi-Fi and get what they need to continue on.
Very good. And as my vice president has said, it's all been already set. But I always want to say thank you to our teachers who come out and pour into our students every day and the summer school and the enrichment. We do appreciate the work that you all are doing. And just to say thank you again for that and, you know, take advantage of anything that's free 99. The internet is free. So, you know, get your name on that list and let's get those 802 slots filled so that we can ask for some more if we need to.
Absolutely.
But we do appreciate the work that you do. We appreciate Ms. Rankin, 42 years in the district. And she looked, she didn't look her age because 42 years. She looks amazing. So this agrees with her. Absolutely agrees with her. So we do appreciate you all for everything that you do. Moving on to the next item, 1301, we've already done our executive session, so we don't need to go into another executive session. I'd like to sincerely thank the Waycrawls for your service in videotaping tonight's meeting and for all of you for staying with us the whole time and sharing this moment with us. With that said, I'd like to call the meeting of the Winton Woods City School Board of Education regular meeting for Monday, June 27, 2022, adjourned. Take care of yourself, each other, your loved ones. Stay safe, healthy, and well. Good night.